Are we missing chairs for you?
Are we missing chairs for you here?
Usually they're full.
They're outside.
Huh?
The other chairs that we're talking about, they're outside.
Outside? We brought them in last week.
Yeah, I brought them from outside last week.
What do you mean outside, like out here?
Outside, of course.
Do we want them in here or what? There's more people coming in right now.
There's another one coming, I know there's another person coming.
There's four of them over there.
We have interior chairs outside. Where people stand.
I'll sit back then. We'll go ahead and start our special meeting here, we'll start with the Pledge of the Flag tonight. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the freedom of which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, first thing we need to do tonight is amend our agenda, we added an item to the agenda after it was already posted, so we need to add a short-term disability resolution to our agenda tonight, so do you have a motion to add that item?
I'll make the motion, we have a short-term disability resolution to our agenda, and it's gonna be an action item too.
Okay. I'll second that. Nicole John?
I.
Mike?
Aye.
You want to testify? Alright, the main purpose for tonight's meeting is to discuss some allegations that were made here last Tuesday night at our regular township meeting. Typically, probably wouldn't respond to the comments that were being made just because we do have an ongoing audit taking place right now with our auditor, and unfortunately, the claims that were being made needed a response because of the severity of them. So fortunately, that person is not here tonight, but I will be going down over each individual item that he raised last Tuesday. I, to this day, have not read the article that was in the newspaper, sorry Chase. I chose not to read it, but I've received numerous calls about it. And it sounded like you covered the meeting verbatim, which I'm glad that you did. There's a lot of things that need to be straightened out tonight, and I intend to get to the bottom of everything, so. If anybody knows me, they are well aware of how transparent I am about various things that go on in this township. And I intend to be extremely transparent tonight about a lot of items that need to be addressed. So the first thing allegation or topic to be discussed is obviously this PayPal issue. Last spring, we had discussed in two public meetings prior to River Fest about establishing a PayPal account. It was to be our first year back from being more or less shut down through COVID. So for 2020 and 21, we had done just a basic duck derby raffle, we didn't even conduct River Fest normally. So last year was our first year back, and we were looking for ways to try to boost ticket sales to raise more money for the recreation group, which in turn goes back into our parks that people attend, which is Rearview Park and the Boat Launch. So it was discussed at those meetings how we would handle that. I know at the second meeting, when it appeared evident that we were gonna go ahead and do that, we discussed a little more detail. Due to online hacking and stuff like that, we wanted to try to secure the account as best as possible. So when you establish a PayPal account, you have to hook a financial institution to that account. The PayPal account is Woodward Township Recreation's PayPal account, not Kyle Coleman's. So I just wanna be extremely clear about that. The PayPal account is no different than any other bank account, other than it's online. You have to have an account owner for that account, just like we have bank accounts here through Jersey Shore State Bank. So the best of mind knowledge, all three of us are owners of those accounts, we sign documents that allow us to be check signers. So essentially, the PayPal is the same. I put my name on the account because some of our board members preferred not to be, one of them is elected official, and she tries to veer from having involvement with those things. So I put my name to the PayPal account, and at the time that we set it up, the supervisors, which would be Wayne Love, who was the chairman at the time, John Barth and myself, said that we would not hook our township recreation account here with Jersey Shore State Bank to that, that we would wait until River Fest had commenced, and then link that account to that, and make the transfer out of the PayPal account and close the PayPal account, and that would be the end of it, there was no need for a PayPal account to be active when we only operate basically for June and July for River Fest. So during that time, we sold twenty-three tickets through PayPal. At five dollars apiece, the tickets were marked individually for the PayPal ones, to keep those separate. So pull these tickets out of here. So what we did was, whenever the tickets were sold through PayPal, the person buying the ticket was to put their name and their phone number in the subject line of the transaction, that way we could identify them and put their name and phone number on these tickets. So there was twenty-three tickets sold, which are right here with PayPal written on them, name and phone number, and they were kept separate in this bank bag here since July sixteenth, on Saturday of River Fest. So twenty-three tickets ended up being a hundred and fifteen dollars sold into the PayPal account. Once River Fest was over, I approached the Secretary Treasurer about linking the account. So when you open up PayPal, I know you guys can't see this, but this is a screenshot of the PayPal account summary. There's an option there to link a card or a bank account. And on this statement here, if anybody wants to look at it, they'll see that my debit card is on the account. So that's my personal checking account that is attached to this PayPal account. Woodward Township was never at risk of losing any money out of any accounts here, there was... Kyle Coleman was at risk of losing his personal checking account to online hackers. So simply, all we had to do was link the bank account to the township, transfer the hundred and fifteen dollars out of it, and end it, and we probably wouldn't be sitting here tonight even discussing this. So these printouts will be going to the auditor. There was ten days of activity in the PayPal account from July sixth to July sixteenth, so there was ten days there where a total of twenty-three tickets were sold. So I just wanna clear the air about the PayPal issue. There was nothing criminal going on there, it was a very simple process, and when the transaction didn't take place, I felt it was best to leave the money sit in the PayPal account versus transferring it to my personal checking account, and then having to write out a check from my personal checking account into Woodward Township Recreation. So I felt that safest place for it was to sit there until we had come up with something. The disappointing part about this factor is Wayne Love, who came in here last Tuesday, remained a supervisor for approximately six months after River Fest, seemingly aware that money remained in that account, and never mentioned to me about that money at all. Had all the opportunity in the world to say something to me about making that transfer, it would have been a five-minute process to make that transfer, and nothing happened. He chose to take a different route and come in here and grandstand last Tuesday, and make it appear as though something illegal was taking place. So tomorrow, we can all come in here, and we can set the account up, transfer the money out, request a check from PayPal, whatever, but we can put it to bed and be done with that aspect of it. So those funds are in a township recreation account through PayPal, just to be clear. The next issue was the failure to turn documents over in timely fashion. So Wayne accused us of not giving the documents to the auditor when she requested them. So Jackie, our Secretary Treasurer, notified us. I'm gonna say sometime around, we'll say about the sixth of February, somewhere in that ballpark, about the auditor needing some recreation documents. So Saturday on February eleventh at ten-twenty in the morning, I received an email from our auditor requesting documents for River Fest. Which, if anybody wants to see these emails, they're more than welcome to have them. Two minutes later on Saturday morning, I responded to her, "You can call me at any time on my cellphone to set up a time to meet up for the items you're requesting." So Monday morning, that coming Monday there on the thirteenth of February, I received a phone call from the auditor, probably around ten o'clock in the morning, to discuss getting these items. And during her and I's discussion, she requested that I bring the documents to her, and throughout our conversation, I had questioned her why she needed these documents, I had asked her, she'd been doing her audit for the past two, three years, never requested these items before, just curious if there was an issue that I was unaware of. I told her that had I known that she needed these items, we would have prepared them probably a bit better for her versus just throwing our items into our totes at the end of the year. So she proceeded to tell me that there was issues going on within the township the past two years that she was working out, and that's why they didn't focus on the recreation account, and that this year there was more activity in the recreation account because of the PayPal, and we also received a donation from a company which basically was for the project that took place down at the Boat Launch with the riverbank enhancement. So there was more activity going on, that's why she wanted to look at those items. So she then questioned me about why I never fill out the forms that she mails out to us supervisors each year for her audit. And I told her that I did not wanna fill those forms out because there was things that were going on within this township that I was not involved with, so I was not willing to speak on behalf of those items. So I asked her about the problems that were going on. She told me that there's reports issued to the township every year for the audit, like the final report. So I personally have never seen them, so I had requested, or she said that she would email them to me. So on Monday after her and I got the phone, here's the email, she emails me the reports for the audits. So, which I'll get back to that later. So during her and I's conversation, we had scheduled a meeting for Friday, I believe it was the seventeenth. So when her and I talked on Monday the thirteenth, we had discussed that we were gonna meet at the sewer office. I told her that the records were kept over there, like our township, our recreation stuff. And her and I were planning to meet there on Friday, the seventeenth at ten AM. I spoke to our operations manager, Gerard Banfield, told him that I would need to be over there on Friday in the morning to pull the requested items for the auditor. On Thursday, I received an email from the auditor asking to reschedule the meeting for another day. In addition, she wanted the meeting to take place at the township's office in the presence of township supervisors and the solicitor. So at that point, I was a little alerted as to what is taking place in the past four days, how we got from her needing a few simple items such as unused duck derby tickets and a few other things, to now requesting that the supervisors be here and the solicitor. So I made a phone call back to her on that Thursday, the sixteenth, about the issues, and I spoke to her secretary, told her that we would need to have a conversation because potentially we need to have a scheduled meeting for something with all of us getting together. So that was discussed. I think at some point throughout that process, John, I called you and asked you if you knew anything was going on, I said, "This seems odd to me that she's asking for these things," and you had told me that you hadn't known anything.
Why don't you mail them, we got them afterwards at that point.
Right. And I believe, I called you, Mike, same issue, you know, "What's going on? I don't understand what the deal is here." So called back, talked to the secretary, told her that we'd have to talk with our solicitor. Basically, I responded with an email to find out what day she'd like to meet. So we discussed some things. She replied with another email that afternoon, that some dates and times that she'd be available, and what the purpose was. I spoke with Tom, he was out of town at a convention or something with work, felt that we did need to advertise it, called back to the auditor, left her know that we were definitely at the scheduled meeting. So Friday, the next day, I get another email from her. The list now grew to nine items, which some of them were duplicates, but she was suggesting instead of arranging a meeting to get the requested information, to have the supervisors and the solicitor review the requested documentation after the review to provide those documents to her. So at that point, we intended to have a meeting, but then felt that it wasn't necessary, she just wanted the items. So that was the end of the discussion. Her and I talked Friday on the... Friday the seventeenth in the afternoon, I told her it was no problem, I wanted her to know that I acknowledged your email, that we would get the information, asked her how quickly she needed the documentation. She said within two weeks. So that was Friday. Tuesday night, I walk in here to a complete circus that took place, not understanding why we have a gentleman coming in here saying that we're failing to turn over documents, and accusing us of holding things up, and all this and that. So when I spoke to her Friday, I was under the assumption we were good for two weeks. So we're still within that time window, as we sit here.
And I spoke with her on Friday, and she indicated that she would be able to come pick them up hopefully tomorrow, so.
Yeah.
No, I don't think there's a time for that.
I mean, if she was here tonight, she'd be welcome to date with her tonight.
She was invited to tonight, she said she'd rather just pick them up later.
Yeah. So the claim of the township failing to turn over documentation to this auditor is not accurate at all. Then the other issue was the records were not being kept at the township. We had a room out here in our garage designated for recreation items. So back years ago, when Marie Self was involved, she used to take all the plastic ducks home with her down to River Fest, and they would be stored at her house in her garage, along with other items that were accumulated over the years. When Marie and her husband stepped down, we ended up keeping those items here. We built a closet out there, had shelves in there, and all of our totes were in there with all the plastic ducks, just all of our supplies. Last year at some point, our Secretary Treasurer asked our road crew to remove those items from there and put them above our attic out here in the garage, and there was totes stored out there now in our space for, I'm gonna assume records, is that correct? They're like township files.
They're all the financial records.
Okay. So this July, when I came into the township to get stuff out for River Fest, I nearly fell off the extension ladder out there getting the items out of that attic. And I told our road guys at that point, "They're not going back up there, like we gotta figure something else out." So once River Fest was done, I had them stored in an enclosed trailer of mine for a little while, then I had an empty shed in my backyard that I stored our supplies in. After about three or four weeks, I had called our operations manager, Gerard Banfield, and I said, "Hey, do you suppose there'd be a problem with us keeping our stuff over there sewer house in one of those spare rooms downstairs?" I don't want time I shed up at my house for these items. So to be clear about the items that are over there, there, once again, anybody's welcome to all these pictures that I took three days ago, it's supplies, we have noodles for putting in the river to line the ducks down the river, totes full of prizes that we hand out for gifts and stuff to the kids. Here's a picture with the unused duck tickets. Paper towels, footballs, pop-up tents, totes with prizes, ducks, I mean just supplies, ducks, tables. There is one tote that was stored over there, which is right beneath me here, that has supplies in them as well as tickets that we sold that are rubber-banded together in this box right here, and a box of unused tickets which is down here at my feet as well. There is no financial documents kept off-location here at all. We have bank statements through the township for recreation that our Secretary Treasurer keeps track of in her files. River Fest is pretty cut and dry, we sell duck tickets at five bucks apiece. When it's over with, we rubber-band the duck tickets together, which are right here, they're all packaged in here. And we count the money at the end of River Fest and put it in envelopes, and it's clearly marked what the money was for, the amounts that were in there to match up with the sold duck tickets. So as far as the question being raised about to me, these top-secret records that should be kept on-location here, they don't exist. So we keep supplies off-location because we lost our space out there, and it's not safe for anybody within this township to be crawling up and down that ladder through a crawl space out there to pull documents down.
Yeah, that's why the other records come down, because when we did have the township records, they were up there.
Correct. So.
Same deal, them guys can't keep going up there and getting stuff, I mean, either one.
Right.
Recreation or township.
Yep. The next issue that was raised was Wayne Love made it appear as though I was trying to do something by having her meet at the sewer house other than the township. That's where these items were stored at. So in my opinion, that firm works for us. It's not our job to take those documents to those people. They should come to our place and sign off on some kind of form or whatever, that they're receiving these documents, because once they leave our location, who's responsible for these items? You know, in the work that I do, those records do not leave those facilities. And if they need to leave there, I have to call and get permission, and have to be signed off on in the event that those records would be lost. So considering the emails that were being passed back and forth with the contention that I was seeing, I was not comfortable taking these items to this woman and dropping them off. So maybe she didn't like me telling her if she wanted them, if she needed to meet me there and come get them, but I'm sorry. She works for us, we pay good money to that firm to have this work conducted. And to be honest with you, there's nothing that says that we have to use that firm. If we choose to use somebody else, that's alright. And I didn't appreciate the fact that she was pretty adamant on me bringing them to her, and when she found out I wasn't willing to bring them, that somebody else bring them to her. She started sending private emails to you guys and not including me on those emails, which I'm not real happy with. So and also, the other claim that Wayne Love made was that I was intimidating the auditor because of my position with my personal job. Through my conversation with that lady, I also told her that I have a full-time job, and that I was working out of town conducting an audit at Blair County, and would not be able to meet her at her convenience, and that's why we scheduled that meeting at ten o'clock on the seventeenth. Never once did I try to intimidate her because I work for the government. I was making it clear to her that I was not available to meet just at her convenience. So just wanna be extremely clear about that. Of all the issues that were raised, I'm not very happy about that because that's a personal attack on me and affects my career and personal life by the statements that he made. So just to be very clear about that, that was the issue behind that. I apologize for the length of this, but I'm gonna go down through this chronologically and methodically to make sure that everything's crossed because Chase, I commend you for your work, but you wrote an extensive article that requires a lot of attention to be gone over, so. I appreciate you for what you do, and I'm trying to make sure that we have all of our bases covered here. So to shorten things up with these emails, these are emails that are, once again, being conducted with the auditor that I'm not included on. And I sat back there last Tuesday and said that that stuff needs to end, like the three of us are supervisors, okay? I'm reading emails, and the only reason I found out about them is because our solicitor copied me in on one, and then I could see the email chain of emails down through here.
That's when your Tom after we got them.
Yes, so I don't know who's the breakdown in communication, but I'm gonna say it one last time, because I'm getting tired of talking about an executive session. There's three supervisors sitting at this table. If somebody's got a problem with everybody being included on those communications, there's a door out front, and they're welcome to walk out and leave and don't come back. Because we have a communication policy in place that basically states that everybody needs to be in communication. So once again, if anybody's got a problem with that.
I don't have a problem, when was the last time, because I haven't got an email from her.
I think they stopped them.
Yeah, it was Friday or Monday.
So, and the majority were serious there.
I think the last one.
But I've only ever talked to the lady once on the phone.
Yeah, the last one we got, I was talking about, I sent it to Tom, that's when I got it.
Yeah.
Just for that reason, it came to Mike and I almost, so.
I just, I I wanna be clear about that, I don't I don't wanna talk about an executive session and play nice guy about it, I'm I'm telling you here for the last time. Everybody needs to be on board, you and I sit on a sewer board and we have a pretty good chain of command. The operations manager reaches out to me as the chairman. It's my job to contact all you guys, or if he chooses not to contact me first, he knows to contact all of us, so we're all in the loop. And it it's a beautiful system, it works, works. It it's not working here, and it hasn't been working here for four years and I'm getting tired of dealing with it, so. Please be on board with it, or.
I'm on board with it.
Okay, I'm no, I'm not saying you're not, but I'm just, I'm making it clear, you're new to this, so. John's been listening to me complain for years. I know, I know you did, yeah.
Like I said, that's why that one gets sent to Tom, because it came to Mike and I.
Welcome aboard, Mike, so it's just a taste of what's been going on here for four years. So I think that pretty much addresses the majority of the things in that article, so. The the next thing that was brought up was our secretary treasurer claimed that. This was the worst year that she's ever collected documents from us recreation people. That the stuff was not organized, it was not like it had been in years past and had also. Claimed that I was the one who brought the money in here to her and put it on her lap and it was unorganized. I got home that evening, last Tuesday, and I did my homework, okay, so I'm gonna set the record straight real quick about this one. On Sunday, July seventeenth, I sent a text message out to our recreation group. I got the gifts placed into the meeting room and ended up placing all of our stuff in one of my sheds that was empty in my backyard. That was a little better option than taking up a bunch of steps. Thank you, everyone, I think it was a good success, especially coming back from two years of not having it, great job, everyone. Jennifer Hoy replies, thanks, everyone, Shelley Oxheimer replies, yes, thank you, everyone, Susan Lingle, thank you all too. The next morning at seven forty-eight in the morning on July eighteenth, Susan Lingle sends a text message out to our group. Good morning, everyone, just letting all know that Fred, which is her husband, attorney here in town. Will be taking the money boxes to the township building sometime this morning, he will send me a message after drop-off, I will let you all know when that happens. Also, all the monies were counted correct, just making sure someone knows the amount that is in the boxes. Shelley replied, I know that Jen and I counted the duck money and marked the envelopes, I believe there are two for ducks, also counted the fifty-fifty and that envelope is marked. Not sure about the games since Tracy was still doing those when I left, which. This year, uh, we had some new people help us out and they were conducting some games to try and help us out. Susan replied, thanks, Shelley, Fred is on his way to the township building now to drop off the money. That, that's the end of the emails, so.
Yes, Fred did drop off all the diamonds.
Okay, do you wanna apologize to me?
Well, no, because.
Don't, don't go on, you sat here and accused me last Tuesday of bringing money into you and said I was on camera doing it. You know, you had your chance, Jackie, I just read text messages, no.
That is true.
I don't wanna hear it.
Well, at least I remembered it was a male that dropped the money off.
Okay, well, considering the accusations that Wayne Love's sitting here making about things being mishandled and then you jump on board with them. And claim that I brought you money, which I, nobody knows this, because I don't even discuss it with our own board members, but when I was hired by the government. I stopped handling the cash, because I don't trust people to come back and say something about Kyle's doing this or that, so. Text messages are there, those people count the money and they bring it here, I do not have anything to do with it. You sat here in a meeting Tuesday night, I don't know if he even wrote in this article, which I, it doesn't matter at this point, I'm just setting the record straight. I did not handle the money, I did not bring it here, and it was organized in envelopes clearly marked what was what, just like we do every year.
And they're all saved and they're at the auditor.
That's perfect. So. That takes care of that issue, now. Back, I I had mentioned about the audit reports that Gladys had sent me an email about. Are you aware of those reports by any chance?
I know I have last year's, because when I cleaned out stuff away from my desk and took it into the cabinet in the basement, that was one of the things I carried down. Truthfully, I don't remember where I got it out, whether it was in my mailbox or in the, I mean, I didn't get it from Gladys, I got it around here or somewhere.
Did you ever happen to read them by any chance?
Yeah, the year before that, actually. Well, I was here when Gladys brought it in, because we went over it that year.
Yeah.
And that's the reason we do the bills when we're doing the initial and some of her recommendations.
I can't speak for Wayne Love, because he chose not to be here tonight, I, hopefully everything's okay, I I was hoping he was gonna be here tonight. To straighten this record out, but unfortunately, he's not here and I can't ask him if he reviewed those reports, but. I would assume as much time as he spent here as the chairman, that he would have been privy to that information.
I was gonna say, I don't know if he, he's never checked me that he had him or didn't have him or.
Well, I I just wanna be clear that the past two years that that audit's been conducted, all I've ever been told, once it was completed, an executive session. That every, that Gladys conducted the report, everything looked good, she made some recommendations and we were gonna basically.
Yeah, so we were done with the bills.
Correct. Well, I can tell you right now, she sent the audit reports to me, they're littered with pages of findings. This information was never given to me and had I known this, we probably would have had some discussions about. What we need to do for corrective action to move forward and clean some of this up. And one of the parts that really upsets me about it is the first. I'm gonna call it finding that she wrote in the twenty-twenty report is also the first finding in the twenty-twenty-one report verbatim. So this township failed to correct an issue that was outlawed. I I'm, I was unaware of this, when you guys sat in executive session and told me that. Everything was good and there were some, you know, recommendations.
First year with Gladys, basically, she said there was no signs of any fraud or anything and then she had some recommendations, and like I said, one was initial bills.
Right.
Instead of just, you know, maybe we just went over like bills to be paid and sign the checks.
Right, which I knew you started coming in.
Yeah, I come in, sign.
Started initialing invoices and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And and that's similar to, I think that's kinda what the first one is, she is claiming that the secretary treasurer processes cash receipts payroll. Cash disbursements reconciles bank accounts and signs checks and basically, because there's no segregation of duties, could lead to fraud. So, which. I personally have never suspected that here, I think that our secretary secretary treasurer handles our finances in a way that they're not. Stuff's not being forged or stolen or whatever. But the, a lot of these items are just things that need to be cleaned up or should've been cleaned up, however. One of the ones that concerns me is, I I don't understand this because. We set payroll rates for the employees at the reorganization meeting. She wrote a finding here that during the audit, they discovered that the payroll rates for various positions were not consistent with the reorganization meeting. Which inadvertently presented the incorrect payroll rates. And I don't understand.
Especially the last couple of years, it was just straight dollar, I mean, you know, like this past, well, that wouldn't be on there yet, yeah, it was just a dollar an hour.
Did anybody ever question that to her as to what she was referring to, I mean, you do the, you print the payroll checks every Monday morning. I I haven't signed a payroll check in three years. Since you became our employee, well, up until two months ago, I started coming in and signing the dance.
Mike's been hitting the last couple of weeks because he drives through the room.
Right, but I I'd like to know what that was about, I mean, we have a reorganization meeting here.
Yeah.
And I, I don't understand what that's about, where, how that could be confused. Because we set the rate, that's what should be in the system for the whole year, but according to her, that, there was, that was not the case, so. The other issue where I'm gonna wrap this up is. Wayne Love questioned my integrity here last Tuesday, which I do not appreciate, because I take that. Very seriously with the work that I do and the involvement I have at this township. Also, in this twenty-twenty audit report, there was findings for related party transactions and purchases over state limits. So in twenty-twenty, I received a phone call in February from a resident here that. Two of the supervisors were here at the township building meeting and recommended that I come over here as quickly as possible to see what was going on. There have been things going on that basically people were alerting me that, you know, hey, you might wanna go over there, so. February, February twentieth in twenty-twenty, I come into this meeting room here and you and Wayne are sitting here and I said, hey, what's going on? You guys were looking at Kubota skid steers and stuff that they've been getting quotes on and everything.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So, which I, to that point, was unaware of, unaware of that, which, that's another finding in the report, is we. Went over budget in our one account because it wasn't, that skid steer purchase wasn't accounted for, basically, it wasn't in the budget. Even though we proceeded and bought it that year, so I'll note that I voted against. Secondly. Come into the meeting room and start talking about the multimodal grant that was going on at that time. So I sat here and told you guys that, hey. With my job as being a state auditor auditing liquid fuel money, it's my opinion that we should only take the paving check out of liquid fuels. And you got, you and Wayne both agree with me, yeah, that's, that's, that sounds good with us. So we called our secretary treasurer in here, told her what we were gonna do, she didn't wanna do it that way. So she went back to her office, had a conversation with you and Wayne again, guys, listen. I'm probably one of the only guys in the state that is a supervisor and also audits the same money, just, I'm trying to tell you, this is how we should do it. You don't have to do it, but I'm telling you, this is how we should do it, you guys once agreed with me again. Called the secretary treasurer back over into the meeting room and told her what our decision was as a group of supervisors. This was, I think this was probably one of the first steps I was taking to try to bring the three of us together and, hey, we need to stick to a decision and. Everybody else needs to follow suit, so secretary treasurer comes back into the room, told her what our decision was and. She said, that's fine, just put it in the email. So I sat right here in this room with you and Wayne and authored this email to Jackie at three twenty-three in the afternoon. And I said, Jackie, just following up on our conversation we had with you about the Crocolo project. The invoices that should be paid from the general fund for the project would include. SARS, any pipe and material purchases and labor slash contractor work that we hire out. The only check we would like written from the state aid account, which is our liquid fuels, towards the project would be just the paving invoice when we receive one. So that was the end of that conversation. On March seventeenth, I come into a township meeting, you and I are sitting here, I open up my folder and. There is multiple checks written out of the state account for everything but paving. I asked you what was up with it and you said, I don't know anything about it. So Wayne walked in, I said, we need to go to the garage, we need to talk. So we went out there, ended up turning into a screaming battle about what took place, I had an email. Basically stating word for word what to do about this situation and I wasn't involved, you weren't involved. So somebody took it upon themselves to start writing checks out of liquid fuels account. Do you, do you recall this by any chance?
I do recall part of it, yeah, not detailed, but.
Well, we come back into the meeting, I I wasn't gonna stand out there and fight in that garage when the meeting, it was five after seven, we need to get back in here and start the meeting. I come in here, start the meeting off and I wanted an answer in public how this happened. And because the checks were written, so now the stuff's gonna be voided, it's gonna turn into a mess of paperwork. And you didn't know anything about it, I didn't, so to my opinion. Wayne took it upon himself to communicate with our secretary treasurer to change it. The way I took it, and you're welcome to correct me if you'd like, Jackie. But the way I took it was, you didn't wanna do that and you said something to Wayne about it and he gave you the approval to go ahead and write out liquid fuels. And the majority of the supervisors didn't know about it, which is not happy about at all. If anybody pays attention to the township business here in the past couple of years, that was also the meeting that the tape recorder was lost. So. That never came back up till two months later, I I didn't even know about it until May of that meeting. But prior to that township meeting on March seventeenth, we had a meeting here with Darren Stover to do a road tour of Crocolo about the multimodal grant. During that time, we were discussing quotes that were received for excavation work on Crocolo about the pipe work. Wayne Love was carrying quotes from a few individuals, a few companies. One of them was from Kevin Blatts, another one was from Buck's Excavating, which. Is a relation of Wayne's. We sat here and discussed about how to handle that, Wayne was trying to sell us on the point that we should use Buck. Which is his nephew, because his, even though his hourly rate was more expensive. He felt it would be cheaper in the end because Buck's equipment was larger than Kevin Blatts' equipment and could get the job done quicker.
Yeah, Buck's truck was bigger, yeah.
Do you, you're, so I'm.
The excavator was bigger too.
Correct, so Wayne's theory was, his machines are bigger, he's gonna get done quicker, even though his hourly rate is more expensive. Yeah, I'm not making this stuff up here, so you're all.
And actually, it works that way too, it's, you know.
Okay, my, my, my response to you guys at that meeting and Darren Stover was sitting there as our municipal rep. And I even said to you, John, as a business owner, you don't quote out roof jobs by the hour, you do them by the job. Or whatever you're doing work, you you do an estimate based on the job.
Insert jobs, sometimes I do do them by the hour, depending what they want bid.
So I I was trying to use you as an example, you're a business owner, you should always stare on the telephone. So. After twenty minutes of arguing and our municipal rep sitting here telling us that basically, you guys do what you want. But I'm telling you, when the state does a job like this, it's bid out per the project, not by the hour, so. Technically, Kevin Blatts should've been awarded that work for Crocolo, but. As I said, I'm extremely transparent, that is one of the mistakes that I made as a supervisor sitting here in this township over the past seven years. We ended up going with Buck because I honestly didn't wanna argue about it anymore, I was tired of it, so. On. On April twenty-first, there's a check written out of liquid fuels to Buck's Excavating for ten thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents. Which is conveniently just under the threshold of quotations to get actual advertised quotes. So during that time, I received a phone call from Wayne Love asking me, trying to leverage me with my position as an auditor as to. What we should have Buck put on his invoices to keep it under the quotations. Buck turned in invoices going in in excess of thirty thousand dollars. That, by law, requires a sealed bid advertised in the newspaper, this township violated that, okay?
The other thing I'll say tonight is that one piece wasn't actually part of the original Crocolo, Crocolo thing.
It was added in, but two of the invoices were.
Two, two are over regular invoices, the one of them was, where they just turned it aside and rode out.
Yeah.
Caused a mess, we had to get fixed.
Yep, and I had said to Wayne that day on the phone. Here, here's what the thresholds are, but I'm not getting involved with it, because to be honest with you, I was still ash-chapped over my email getting ignored. About not writing the checkout account and it, honestly, it probably would never happen, because we had a liquid fuel auditor come in here and catch us. And this township was written up for a related party transaction, so. At that point, during a conversation Wayne had called me about, he was asking my opinion about. At that point, during a conversation Wayne called me about, he was asking my opinion about reimbursing the money. And to intentionally hide the money from being in liquid fuels to get it out of there. Before a state audit was conducted showing that we had written money out of the liquid fuels. So you, you were involved with those conversations. I'm just telling you, because you're, no, that's fine, but when somebody sits back there and questions my integrity, I've had enough. And after what went on last week, I'm, I'm not leaving a stone unturned here. So on July second of two thousand and twenty, that check was reimbursed from liquid fuels. Or from the general fund into liquid fuels.
That was good, yeah.
And it was done intentionally to basically cover up the mistake that happened. The auditor caught the mistake because of minutes and doing his job. So. That, i- if you do look at our issued report, and the only reason I know that the finding was written. I think, I think our secretary treasurer may have called me and told me that we did get written up, but the auditor also called me. And told me what was going on. To keep me in the loop about it. So when, a- and what I'm getting at about this. And and I could go on for hours with stories to this nature that have gone on at this township. I've kept my mouth shut about because I didn't want to cause a problem. But after the stunt that was told here last Tuesday, questioning my integrity in front of everybody in this meeting room. And then also, as far as I'm concerned, Clinton, Lycoming and Center County. Because that newspaper is distributed throughout those counties. And when I go audit townships in Center County, those secretaries and township managers communicate with me about, hey, we. We see, you know, you guys are doing this in your township, so if they're aware of that, they're aware of what just took place here last Tuesday. So don't come in here and question my integrity when I try to do everything by the book in here. And been manipulated here for the past four or five years trying to get drug into inappropriate situations. To, you know, be taken down with it when it all comes crashing down. So that, that is not gonna go on here ever again, I can promise you that and I I'm sure you agree, Mike. I mean, you, you guys were targeted heavily at the fire company, you know, over things over the past few years. Now, I'm not gonna go into that, but there was an issue once again that that ex-supervisor was heavily involved with. That was not appropriate, i- if we, that money, that fire tax fund is taxpayers' money. We had to follow those same guidelines when distributing that money. There was a project done over there, not kosher, we'll just leave it at that. So. I, I hope I'm making myself extremely clear that I feel bad for our recreation group. Like I, we were targeted about stuff that was so minor that simply could have been turned over. And none of this had to even happen here tonight, but now I'm a little concerned going forward. I don't, I don't, Jennifer, Trace is out there, but.
Shelley's out there.
And Shelley's out there as well, but, you know, we put a lot of time into this Riverfest stuff, spend countless hours. You know, I use a lot of personal stuff of my own with my trailer and just countless hours doing these things. And I, I, I really, I'm unaware of any issues that we've ever had, honestly. We might get in disagreements over who's scooping the ice cream or who's whatever, but I mean, we've worked together. Counted the money, it's been successful, you know, and what took place here last week was uncalled for. And. To just summarize, what's extremely frustrating me is he was aware of that situation that he came in here about. He had months upon months to bring that up to me and we could have transferred the money and this, this conversation wouldn't be happening. But. You know, he wanted to seize the moment to take a stab back at me, whatever. So I don't come unprepared, I knew I had documentation, I don't delete emails, I keep everything. Because I don't, and I, like I said, sitting back there, he was sitting back there last Tuesday, I don't trust them. And this is why, this is why I keep records of these things. So we can all work together here and keep moving this township forward. Or you guys can keep going this way and our workers can keep going this way and it's gonna be miserable. Cause I'll come in here every third Tuesday at seven o'clock and I'll sit here and do the same thing every month. Until we're all on board as to what's going on at this township working together. So we can get back to thirty minute meetings that are smooth sailing. People are feeling good about what's going on in their township and I can go home at night and sleep and not wake up at three o'clock in the morning having nightmares. About what people think is going on at this township. Cause the, uh. I can tell you right now, the forty-three dollar check that we get from meeting is not worth the conversations I had to have the past week. I spent hours on the phone discussing stuff with people about things that were not necessary at all. And I'll, I'll never quit this, I'll never quit this, ever. So you can, anybody can run in here and say whatever they want, do whatever they want, run this place down, I'm never gonna quit. So my dad called me the other night, you think you should resign? Absolutely not, I, I'm, I will never do it. So I've been involved here, I don't, I've been with Jennifer for a long time, since I was a, a young kid. I mean, I've been involved with Riverfest for fifteen years, I'm.
Absolutely.
Somewhere around, I was twenty, twenty-one years old when Jim Bressi and Marie Self came to me and wanted me involved. So I could easily come in here tonight and throw this stuff out and say, figured out, I'm done. But I'm not gonna do that. So Jennifer and Shelley have personal things going on in their lives that they need to move on with, we're, we'll pick up the pieces and move on and I'm sure.
We'll volunteer.
They get a chance to come down and.
Shelley says yes.
Sell some tickets, they'll be there, but I, I don't blame them for wanting to go on that, people don't understand what's involved every year. And if anybody's close to me in my personal life, I, I probably ruined relationships and things with. Previous girlfriends of mine or friends of mine because of, because of this stuff of the year, you know, and it. Starting today, it's not going on anymore, I can tell you that right now, so.
So what happens if the recreation board, this stunt chase volunteers away? What, what happens if the money isn't being made or the support to back it?
Unfortunately, that's the negative spin that happened off this and we're, all I know is that we're gonna make the best of it. So, but I can reassure you and anybody else in the public, there is nothing going on here, fishy. And anybody of the twenty, there wasn't twenty-three people because there were some people that bought four tickets. But of the people that bought those PayPal tickets, their money was counted and, and I, I'm not for certain, but I do think that maybe. Somebody that did buy a PayPal ticket might have actually won a prize, so there, it was legit. So.
Yeah, as far as getting help this year too, Mike and I already said we'd help with the recreation committee this year to.
Yeah.
Try to fill in some, you know, there's a lot of work to do there.
Right. But like I ended my conversation with Wayne Tuesday night, I, I will put my integrity on the line against anybody's. And I, and I mean that, and I, and I'm trying to illustrate that by things that have gone on here in the past that are not gonna continue anymore. Cause I'm not gonna have people coming up to me anymore telling me that Woodward Township is the worst township in Clinton County to deal with. Like it's done with. So I think we have a, a good group of people here and if everybody's willing to work together, good things can happen. But if we're gonna continue to divide, it's gonna be miserable and I'm gonna start coming in here at meetings and asking people to leave. So, and that's how it's gonna be. So and I, I don't, I hope it's not gonna be an issue going forward, I hope I was pretty clear tonight about some things, so. Now that my forty-five minute spiel is over, I, I think I encompassed items four and five on our agenda. So I don't, I don't think I left anything uncovered here tonight, but I, I just.
The only other thing, and it's like your Jack and Amber talked, that quit the upcoming audits as they command this year. Jackie had a comment, like the first year when I was here, I was here when you audited Agladas come in. And it actually worked nice because you could sit here and ask her questions and.
Yeah.
Jackie made the comment today, it would probably be really good if all of us could meet with her. Like here, the three of us and Jackie being the treasurer and just what you said, when you come down over the findings, if we have an issue.
Yeah.
What's this?
There's.
I'll sit here to tell you.
There's gonna be mistakes, but that, and that's what the purpose of those reports are, but if we're not finding out about those reports. How she can't make the corrective action on her own, so. That means that we relay to us supervisors.
And if you don't correct them, they're gonna still continue.
Correct, so.
Well, like I said, when Jackie said that it makes sense that, you know, if we can get it arranged.
Right.
Here on out, just try to set up a meeting with the auditor that, you know.
Right.
Move in over the stuff and.
Um.
Then she's got it listed in order too, which, you know, the more critical stuff to do.
Right.
Stuff that doesn't, not doesn't count, but doesn't matter there as much, you know.
A- another note that I made to myself that I, I know, I think you've reached out to Gladys in the past, Jackie, about. Questions about maybe how to do something or, or, you know, like kind of looking for her opinion. I, and in my professional opinion, she should not be giving this township advice. She, you're either our accountant and you're gonna ask us how to do something, or, or I mean, make recommendations on how to do something. Or you're our auditor and you're reviewing that stuff telling us you should do that or you shouldn't do that. Because you, you can't be both. And if she's giving us information prior to audit, that's pre-audit advice and that's not, that's not appropriate. So if this township needs to hire an accounting firm to handle a quick book issue or a question or concern.
Most of what Jackie, I mean Jackie could recommend is, most of what she was asking was more on the line of. How it then should be categorized for the audit, which way it would go through better, you know, couldn't say better.
Yeah, I mean, she shouldn't be doing that, in my opinion, you know, I. And, and, you know, with my experience, if, if an audity asks me something like that, there, I direct them to their municipal rep. They, they need to answer that because if, if I go in there and tell them you should do it this way and then I come in and audit them. Well, I'm, I'm setting the stages for me to either screw them over and write them up or do it a certain way where I'm. You know, creating simpler work for myself, it's either one or the other, but they, they should. That scenario, they should be asking the municipal rep, you know, ju- just like with you, if you have a question about something with the state audit stuff. Those questions should go to the municipal rep.
And we do ask questions to the municipal rep and there's another gentleman that we work with as well, he's very good.
Mike Wigel, the financial consultant?
That sounds correct.
Yeah, so tho- those are the guys to ask, but you.
But during, uh, during an audit, um, if they do see something, they will, the auditor does explain why it should be this category. Versus this category.
Right.
Uh, that type of thing.
I mean, usually that stuff's issued in a report if there's an adjustment made, that, you know, it should have been here instead of there.
It should be roads instead of highways, it could be four thirty-eight instead of four, and you understand those.
Right, yeah, yeah. But I, I just wanna be clear about like that, so that doesn't become an issue someday, I mean, she technically should not, i- and if she is. But if she is, she shouldn't be guiding us on those things and then turn around and audit us, that's just not good practice. So, and I'm not saying she is, but I'm just saying that if, if she would be guiding you on how to conduct your bookwork and then turn around and audit it. That's not appropriate, is what I'm getting at, so, okay, I just made a note to myself, wanted to be clear about that. So, all right. Um, I think basically the only thing on our agenda is adopting the short-term disability.
Yeah, Tom, your real red motion has reset here.
And, um, from what I understand, and Jackie can correct me if I'm wrong on this one too, is that. In, in order to get to the coverage, the short-term disability coverage that was approved at the last meeting, we have to join this trust, which is essentially a pooling trust to. To get lower rates for members, um, so they require us to join it for at least a year. I mean, the rates that we got were for this year, so I don't think it has any real effect of the fact that we're in this pooling trust to get our rates at that level. So I don't see any issues with what I've looked over, um, you can discontinue being in trust with ninety days notice, so.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any real issue with, with approving it tonight, uh, based on the resolution we have in the trust documents that I have.
Okay, did I mention to, uh, adopt the resolution?
I'm gonna make a motion to adopt the resolution to join the trust to get into the short-term disability through P S A.
Oh, second, Crocolo, John?
I, Mike?
I.
Myself, I.
Um, from the floor, just start up front, anybody? Trying to have anyone?
I'm, I'm not sure about the audit information that you gave.
Right.
Um, that was withheld from you?
Yeah, I, I didn't get, that, that report's issued to the township and it was never, I never received a copy of it. We just, in executive session, I think when the audit was conducted.
Yeah.
We'd maybe have a discussion that, you know, it's, everything's good, but there was some recommendation made and we were gonna correct those. But I was a little stunned to see the reports that, that, you know, it's not really the case.
Is that something that he should review every year then?
We're gonna have to going forward, yeah, because we don't want problems to persist like, you know, I mean, it's easy to catch the first one in two thousand and twenty. Was the first one in two thousand and twenty-one.
Yeah.
So I don't, hopefully we caught that for, for this one that she's currently in now, so.
And you have to explain too, we had, in the, during those years, it was the creation of the authority.
Right.
And then the dissolution the following year of the authority, so there was a lot.
There's, yeah, there's.
But there's a couple winter from last year's that had to do with the authority.
Sewer stuff, yeah. Yeah.
So that's something you're gonna look at from now on now.
Hundred percent, yeah.
And, uh, something that wasn't written in the article. From hearsay, I heard that Wayne was in emails with people that you were not involved in. Why is he even involved in anything? How does he know anything? We don't know this stuff, how does he know this stuff? Just from this fire.
I don't know.
The other, the other thing, that's just from the conversation he had, he basically mentioned that she called him.
Who's she?
The auditor.
Why would she call him?
Cause he was the chairman last year when this, for the time period this audit was.
I work at a jail and you don't contact.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying she shouldn't have contacted the rest of us also, but I can see Wayne being involved.
Makes you guys all look like fools, it makes all of you look like fools that way.
Yeah, I, I mean, that.
Not just one of you, all of you.
But he should have said, I'm no longer a supervisor, you know, called his office.
Well, he has no integrity, he can't do that, you know, he still thinks he's a supervisor.
But we tried to address that here last Tuesday as to, I, I mean, I, I was clear about, you know, hey. If you wanna communicate with the board, I, and I, and I'll maintain that, I, if he's got an issue going forward, he should be contacting all three of us. Or if he contacts you about anything, something should be sent out to all three of us immediately.
Should be documented, signed, stamped, everything.
Yeah, I don't, and that goes.
I mean, that's, I think it's unfair that we as the taxpayers don't get the information that one other individual gets.
Right, yeah, I mean, I, I, it's frustrating me to see that I'm a sitting supervisor and I feel like I'm being. Kept out of the loop intentionally about things that were going on and I, I'm trying to take care of an issue here. That really wasn't an issue, but somehow turned into a service.
A hundred and seventeen dollars or whatever you said, as opposed to a skid steer that he used on his property. I know he used on his property, that we bought, that we bought.
That's news to me, it's in here, I, I don't know anything about that, but, yeah. Um, all right, anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Chase, do you have any questions?
Gladys says, get it.
Yeah, yeah, so there's the. The list of the, the stuff's here, which matter of fact, I, I'd like to back up a second before we move on to the floor from somebody else, but. Um, I, I haven't communicated with anybody on the rec board really, other than. A brief apology to Shelley and Jennifer last week after the meeting, I'm sorry that this stuff's going on. And I had a conversation with Jennifer today, I just asked her to go down over the list with me real quick about the. About the stuff that Glass was requesting, which I wanna do that real quick, I should have done that earlier. Um, but the first thing on her, this is like her new updated list, Jackie. The first thing on there is the, all the statements including two thousand and twenty-three, the township's PayPal account, I just have, which I'll give that to her. I have just a transaction report.
Did I get a copy?
I'll, I can give you a copy of it.
The email?
Oh.
Am I on that?
Your, your copy did, all right, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's what we all got.
Um, the two thousand and twenty-two unused duct tape and pressure. And in this box here, um, if she's gonna continue to want those yearly, I mean, we'll. I mean, we just kinda throw them in here this box, I, we didn't think there was any relevance to them, I mean, they're just. I didn't think they're any good, but if she wants them on her end, maybe. I didn't think they're any good, but if she wants them on her end, maybe we can try to keep them a little rubber band. Rubber, yeah, I mean, some of them are still. A lot of them are still rubber banded together, but some of the packs that we broke open that we had spread across the table are now loose. But we'll do a better job of having that material ready for her. Um, the list of individuals who use the PayPal account. Um, that's, I, I can create, I'll, we have till Friday to get this stuff to her. So I could type up a Word document or Excel sheet with, with that, but they're, they're on this here. Um. List of participating and or potential vendors, I, Jackie, you have that stuff, cause those people were mailing.
She has that information.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you already sent that back.
Um, the cost for participating vendors, I have. Um, print-offs here of our. Um. Like our, our vendor thing. That I do up every year, that has like the cost on there for. For per spot, you know, and the percentage that the food vendors pay and the gaining people, that stuff.
And I did send her that information also.
Okay. Uh. The documentation, money collected for each event during River Fest, I mean, it's pretty simple, it's ducks fifty-fifty. And this, I mean.
It was just the games.
The games that we had. Um. List of donated items, debit cards, gift certificates, et cetera, which you have the prize list, like the poster boards, that's, okay. And then any other River Fest related documentation stating income and expenses, I, that's.
That's all the baggies and the envelopes and whatever you guys gave me.
But I mean, you. You write checks out for the bands, so I mean, as far as like dispersments and. She, you have that.
She has that, she would have that, some of that kind of checks we wrote out or.
Gladys has that, but she has the twenty twenty-two bill.
Pretty much from we have, it's gonna be PayPal things, tickets, you know.
Right.
For that list of the PayPal people, you know, used it.
Yeah.
That kind of thing.
Okay.
Cause I actually thought about that before it came on, most of this stuff she has, except these couple.
Right.
Icons.
Okay.
And it's unusual that this stuff isn't here that I couldn't provide it to for. All of my past files. All of the detailed handed lists.
Yeah, you can drop them off to our, our whoever account.
I mean, yeah, we have, we have one tub that has all, I mean, I'd like to think we can keep room for that, but here.
That would be amazing.
Nobody's opposed on our sewer. Uh, board, you know. The pictures are there, it's tables and chairs and pop-up tents and ducks and noodles and stuff, I don't really see, I don't think that's hurting anything, but.
You know, the ducks and stuff, I, I mean, they come up for it, no matter whether they're here, the sewer building, the firehouse, you know.
Higher powers.
Where the rubber ducks are and.
If higher powers want it here, then, I don't know, we'll, we'll figure something out.
Kind of like I said, that stuff doesn't matter, I mean, it's. Like you say, maybe just like PayPal statements and the tickets that we know we need now, you know.
Right.
Make sure we get them by, cause they can win each year.
Hmm, okay, Chase, anything else? Is that it, all right, correct?
But I do wanna say, I, it wasn't that I did not want to apologize to you, I do wanna apologize. My recollection was talking to you about it.
Right.
But I do remember by bringing in the dimes that day, but a lot happens here. Many, many, many things, it's a very busy place.
Well.
And to remember things exactly, I need memory jogger.
I, I get that, but.
Accusations are.
The, the things that were coming out of his mouth and the things you were saying, I, I left here last Tuesday night questioning myself, beating myself up, did I do something wrong, like?
That's what he wanted.
I.
No, it's, no, it's not, friend, no, no.
I don't, I don't wanna feel like that again, I mean, I think we try to run a tight ship and. I don't know, i- it's.
What, what that PayPal thing called, you wanna do that tomorrow?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
So do you need, I don't know what all you need or, you know.
Oh, I can sit at Jackie's computer whether we can log into the PayPal account, there's a link right there, add. Uh, or link a bank account, we can put in the checking account number for the recreation, cause that's got its own checking account number. We put it in.
Thanks for it, yeah.
The only thing is they might, I think sometimes PayPal. When you do that, when you do a bank account, I think they might take a day or two to verify that it's legitimate and they'll put like small deposits and. Like they'll put like a penny.
Yeah.
They'll do two transactions.
Twenty-one thousand or something.
Right, and then you have to like verify that, and then once it's verified, then you're transferring whatever. So, but you know, I, we don't need a PayPal account, we sold twenty-three tickets. I, I don't know, I'll go knock on doors in London Heights to sell twenty-three tickets before I go through this crap again, so. To do that?
Sell on PayPal.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
So you won't be going in anyways?
No, no.
Because not illegal to sell those on PayPal, that's not true, it's in PayPal's policies and PA is also a gambling legal state. I'm not exactly sure where you got your information from.
No. I do know we're not doing it, because it, the crap that just went on here is not worth it, but I, yeah, it, that might, and honestly, if. Potentially, maybe it's not permitted now, but if it's, if it's not, whatever. I think sometime in the future, they're gonna have to look into these things, because I mean, it's kind of the way of the land anymore with these.
Yeah.
Online things, you know what I mean, it's. You guys, I, you know.
Covid was a big thing, they, they allowed. Different organizations to do it just because you couldn't have contact.
And that's, and that's how I got tipped off too, because.
Yeah, that one away, obviously, yeah, with Covid, but, yeah, there's, I mean, there's some, some people still doing things that.
Right, I mean, your, your brothers are the one that called.
You wanna do it, I'm, I'm not, I mean.
We're not doing it, I can tell you that flat out, it's just. But, I mean, that's, that's how I got tipped off too, cause your brother mentioned that you guys were doing it at the fire company, cause Renova had been doing it. And it was, hey, probably shouldn't do that, which I.
Not recommended, from what I've seen.
I called Tom at the time and said, hey, I don't know what to do about, you know. And we basically agreed, the best thing to do was stop advertising for it and when it's done, we're done.
This group of us has talked to about ten different people, guess how many answers we got? Ten different ones.
Right.
And they're all have to do with it, everybody gives you a different, and it's all in how you read it, they're, they're wording it, it's like.
I don't think whatever township's.
Yeah, it's not worth it, yeah, it's not worth it to me, but.
Right.
Avoid it from here on out.
Okay, Chris, do you have any? Theresa?
Um, when you were saying about the bills, so you guys do review them before the meeting, right?
Yeah, before, the way we used to, we review, always kind of reviewed them, but we just had like a stack of bills laying here. And to be honest, like say PPNL, it's always eight hundred dollars a month, and it was eight hundred, nobody bothered much with it, it was the same as we've been paying for years. Now, basically, Jackie, the same paper, you get in here, you can get the papers out front. It has the bills to be paid, Jackie will lay that out here, the bills, I match the bill to the check, to the paper that says bills to be paid, and then. There's one right here, we just did it. And then, sign the bottom of it, that I saw, and numbers matched.
Well, I mean, that's good.
Yeah, it's just a safe check, it.
You know, all these years, you see the list and you think, okay, okay, you guys come in here, and it's like, okay, here's all these bills, you know.
Yeah, we go over.
Yeah.
Last couple of years, we've been either, Wayne did go over them a couple of times itself, but the most time it was maybe I went over. Basically everyone that signed it in the last couple of years.
Uh, my only other question, real quick, and it's, it's not derogatory, but. Um, is, is the propane the only heat up there at the, at the fire hall?
Yes.
Okay. You need to get somebody in there and plug your holes, that's a lot of propane.
Yeah. Um, that's heating.
Big building.
That's heating the whole building, yeah, from one end to the other.
Do you ever turn your thermostat down?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Cause us poor people on a fixed income, that's what we do.
Be nice to Fuji, I would get a line over there through that area, but.
Let's just say it's not too far up back, just keep, keep coming.
Right.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
How do you pay the transition thing, it's very, very bad.
Mm-hmm.
And my sister, please, she's so disappointed, cause you gotta pay even through the summer.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we, we have a propane furnace over here.
Okay.
And, uh.
You and your.
I just cheaper to buy propane, it's a big file, but.
Fuji, I'm. We're getting it for a dollar, it's under two dollars, that's what we're getting it for, so.
Theresa, do you have any?
No, nothing else.
Michelle?
Fine, thank you.
Jennifer?
I'm good.
Gerard?
Yes, I do.
All right.
So I guess they say there's a rhyme or reason, hate that cliche, but as there's three board members here, well, maybe one exited. So, at the sewer house, to be transparent about the new municipal authority. We separate that when it comes to your accounting practice. I know the board was a little uptight about that at first, but right here's why you have an accountant that helps you, or helps me, cause I'm the current acting. Wizard, um. We have an accountant to ask those questions for, and they guide me on a daily or monthly basis. At the conclusion of December thirty-first, everything gets boxed, board makes a motion, and they. During reorganizational structure the year before, appoint and assign an auditing firm, as they did for year books for twenty twenty-two. They've been delivered, the letter was obtained, they got the records, so we use an accountant to do our day-to-day operations. And we use an auditor to make sure that we're doing on a day-to-day operation, this compliant. So I'm proud to report that this may have been growing pains, but I'm sure you can do it right moving forward, not, you're not doing it right, but moving forward, maybe just.
Right.
Learning curve.
Yep.
I have one more thing, you people need to start having contracts signed when you're doing work. Contract, you're, you're contracting at work, you don't have a signed contract with anyone. You need to start doing that.
Okay. Is there any?
Speaking of that, did anyone sign the contract?
We didn't get to that yet, but we will. All right, where are we at? Who, Tracy, I mean.
No, I was gonna do, I came over to support Kyle and tell him we're sorry, my husband's the one that gave you the money.
Oh, I know.
You knew that, and if it was only a couple of dollars, it was not very much, it was leftover money from change, it's so sad that you're getting blamed for something that's not your fault. No, I don't, you know, I just wanna defend him, it's not fair that his name's drunk through that paper. And people are calling you, putting him down because of a little bit of change seven months ago. Seven months ago, now you're bringing it up, and over a PayPal that everybody knew about? And it was okay?
It's disgusting.
And this poor guy, it's sad. You know, his name is, you know, he called us, I was so upset worrying about him, because it hurts you, I know, my name was in the paper before. Over seventeen or twenty dollars. You couldn't count that, and we counted it, you were shocked we even brought it over, it was changed from a game, a dying game. Exactly, and then blaming on poor Kyle, that's sad. Basically, he's gonna choose this stuff. And if you don't think that's the outcome from that paper, then you're wrong, you're missing something. You have my calls, that, what did Kyle do, why is Kyle in trouble? That's the calls I got, Kyle didn't do anything.
Well.
Thanks, Tracy.
Sorry, that's just how I feel.
We know what it's like to have your name bragged, mother of the newspaper.
Yeah, and I, yes.
Is anybody else out there?
Shelley's out here, Susan's out here as well.
Anybody else out?
No, I, I just, I just, um. I'm gonna say that I did resign for personal reasons, um, I think that it may help in the future. I know Wayne had said he wanted the recreation board suspended, and all these investigations, I think that's, um, absurd. Uh, but I think that what maybe needs to be done is just a new, um, reorganization of how.
Yeah.
The recreation board functions.
Yeah, I think we need to.
Supervisor can be more involved.
Yeah.
And, um, maybe that meeting was part of your township meetings, that way it's done, it's recorded, it's taken care of.
I thought about a lot of things when I left here last Tuesday, and I thought it maybe, and, you know, we used to do our recreation meetings on Wednesday, the day after township meeting, but I, I think going forward now that. We're officially gonna be on the board, you know, you and Mike, that maybe. Going forward, we can start having recreation meetings on the meeting night of the township meeting, like six-thirty. And just give thirty minutes, you know, that way maybe people that are coming to the regular meeting can hear what's going on with.
And can be part of it.
Or be, yeah, make suggestions about the park or, you know, what, whatever.
Cause then, then they would see what you and all of us accomplished, the money that you collected from. All those fi- you know, fireworks, I mean, you, you went for that stuff, you got that money for the community, for the park, for the, you know, all that.
Yeah. Um, I appreciate.
He does a lot, absolutely.
I'd like to just thank both Jen and Shelley for your time that you put in, um, in this time of day, um, in this. Volunteers. They're just hard to come by.
You're right.
All right, so if you, if you get a volunteer to volunteer for a year, you did yourself a good job. Uh, if you can get somebody to volunteer for five plus, you did an excellent job, so, um. This didn't help recruiting, um, the only thing that we can do as a group is to stick in there strong. Come out of the chute, make it strong, and try to get people to wanna be part of it. This is like anything else.
Right, absolutely.
Uh, you gotta turn it around, um, so along with the rest of the rec board committed to stand out there that I can't see. Um, I wanna thank you guys for your, your time, um, we all know. Volunteerism is an endless, thankless job.
So. That's the truth.
It is.
You know, first stand in the fire.
It is.
What you guys do is hard enough.
Yeah.
I wouldn't be doing your job for what you get paid, I can tell you that right now.
So, um, I know there was some negativity, uh, didn't get to say it last week, I was hoping that you would show up this week. Um. I know that you'll be there for support, if you can, can do it, um, you, you'll be there to, to help out and. Um, River Fest will go on and here in another month or so, eggs will be on the ground and.
Yep.
We'll let everybody know when we're filming, cause it's a fun evening.
Yep.
So, um, but thank you, thank you for what you've done.
Anybody else out there, don't worry about calling somebody?
Eric's out there.
How about you, Eric, do you have any comments?
Thirty-six thousand two hundred and seventy dollars.
What's that?
It's how much you paid the bucks.
Yep. Yeah.
Yeah. Wayne was worried about a hundred and fifteen.
Again, I'm staying corrected, I truly thought it, Kyle, we had a conversation, and then when Susan dropped my memory.
Yeah.
And I did remember Frank coming in, and then I remembered Fred also thinking twice, so, oh, I do say that.
I wanna move forward in a peaceful manner.
That would be nice.
And if we can't work together, then I, we're gonna have to have serious conversations, so. I'm not going anywhere, I can tell you that right now, I was elected by the people of this township, and I'm planning to be here for a long time, so.
Mr. Chairman, they're cutting in there a bit.
Yeah.
Multiple organizations, chairpersons, me in the past. Why aren't the audits brought to a general meeting for their public information?
Yeah.
So they should be brought in front of you to be signed and acknowledged, it's not just, I'm not turning anybody, but it's not just your treasurer's responsibility, it's the whole team's.
Right.
Responsibility to review that and reading some of the things that I've seen in other. Policy procedures and guidelines may be needed here to correct some of the deficiencies, to move it forward.
I think we need, I mean, the money that we're paying have these services conducted, I, I feel like we're owed a nice sit-down with her. Um, or whoever from that firm.
Like I said, that was Jackie's comment today, was, you know.
It'd be good for everybody.
We're starting, we're starting out.
And then one application.
Reviews.
It's been happening the past couple of years, right?
Well, you have to have a special meeting if you do that.
That's everybody's fault, that's everybody's fault.
That's everybody's fault.
I don't think you would have to have a meeting if you're receiving something like that, I mean, it's possible to have a meeting with the, with the results, but that's up to you guys. I don't think it's required.
We can always ask, we can always ask. I was gonna say, it's an investigation, right, and you're not discussing what you're gonna do or, you know.
As opposed to no policy decisions made.
Yeah, we're not voting on anything or, you know.
All right. Um. We're done from the floor, the only thing we have is an executive session, just to basically review of personnel.
Yeah, there's a couple of questions I was thinking we'd rather.
So, we're gonna do that. Uh, thanks for coming, everyone, tonight, I know the weather's a little tricky, I hope everybody's safe getting home, but.